So I'll call to order the Wednesday, April 5th, 2023 Town Council Special Meeting to Order at 6:07. Clerk, do you do the roll call?
Well, I would love to do that, Mayor, but would you care to just go around the table and introduce themselves?
Sure.
Okay.
Counselor Casiri. Counselor Casiri.
Chris Jones, Councilman.
Juliette Parker.
Dave McBride.
Portia Borlon-Groton, Town Councilor.
Edward Jacob, Town Councilor.
Rachel Franco, Town Councilor.
Mayor Melendez.
John Burt, Town Manager.
Okay, thank you. Would everyone please rise for the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Okay, so we'll do the, move on to the introduction of elected officials. We've already sorted done the council, so if the Board of Ed would like to introduce themselves.
Certainly. My name is Kim Shepherdson. I am the Chairperson of the Board of Education. I do have Andrea Ackerman, who is my co-chair. I have Liz Porter and I believe Jay Whitliff was, Whitliff is also on Zoom.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And we also have Board of Education staff. I have Superintendent Austin. We have our business manager.
Ken Knight.
Ken Knight. He went to Italy. I think I'm just really jealous, and so I'm just gonna skip his name. And then our Assistant Superintendent Phil Piazza. And we have our staff members behind us, too.
Thank you all for being here.
It is our pleasure.
Okay, on to the reading of the public hearing notice. Clerk McCauser.
Town of Groton, Notice of Public Hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Groton Town Council will hold a public hearing on physical year ending 2024 annual town budget pursuant to chapter, that would be at nine, section 9.1, excuse me, 9.3.1 of the town charter on Wednesday, April 5th, 2023, at 6:00 PM at Thrive 55 Living Center, also via Zoom. The full copy of the budget estimates were on the town website and in the town clerk's office, and the full, full display was in the New London Day and on the town website. The budget is there for anyone who's interested.
Thank you. Okay, now on to the budget presentations, starting with the superintendent.
Acting Board Chair. It's not their budget.
She's my diana, so when I struggle with my presentation, she will take over. Welcome. Once again, my name is Kim Shepherdson Watson, and I have been, I am, I have the honor and privilege to be the Chair of the Board of Education. How I really begin to take a look at what a budget is, a budget is, it tells a story. And I'm speaking for the Board. We're very proud of the story that we are telling for this past year and also for this coming year. When we take a look at our mission statement, our mission statement is for teaching and learning with our goals is to provide dynamic, rigorous curriculum, ensure effective engaging instruction, embrace excellent learning environments, and our belief statement is to cultivate an environment of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Is that, do you have a clicker?
Do you want me to click?
I can't click and talk at the same time. I am not that gifted. So once again, what's, what is our story, right? What are, what is this budget going to provide for the children in our district? And so one of, you know, for some of them, it's the, we have an enhanced literacy program for K through three. We have increased rigor and relevance in math instruction for the K through 12 based on Connecticut Core Standards. We have, we have a GPS science curriculum for K through 12 with next generation science and standards. And we are continuing the International Baccalaureate Program, which is currently at the Fitch High School and the Groton Middle School. We have what's considered, what's called a middle years program where every student who is in Groton, six through 11 gets, is being taught through the lens of the International Baccalaureate Program. And then with the International Baccalaureate Program, you also have what's called a diploma program, which is different than the middle years program is actually children, or excuse me, young adults who spend their 11th grade and 12th grade going through a rigorous program with a, and end up with an IB diploma. We have also, in the past, I think it was two years ago, we received a grant where we were able to have international careers and program and pathways, and I believe that's on our website. And we're just really excited about that as a board. We, it's the, it's allowing students as early as their freshman year to kind of walk in into the high school and say, I kind of have an idea about wanting to do this. And it actually helps them think about what clubs or what courses that they might want to take so that they can, so they can get the class. So we're just incredibly excited. We are also exploring, the district tries to be as collaborative as possible, actually, if I'm gonna jump back to another, to part of that story about the careers program and pathways, part of that is creating relationships with local businesses from EB to Pfizer to our small local jobs, and we have someone, excuse me, places of employment, and we have someone who's working specifically on creating those pathways. Another one of our collaborative events is that we're trying to develop better pathways with Grasso Tech. It just happens to be down the hill from both our, our campus of the Groton Middle School and Fitch. And some of it had not been able to go through largely because Grasso did not have the staffing in order to do that, but we're looking at ways of forming after-school opportunities for, once again, for students at Fitch. We're also, for those of you, if you don't know, we, all of our elementary schools are, have magnet themes, and so we're, we're looking at ways that we support with community partners. Part of that, and I, my guess is, is the top picture is children with, from Thames River Magnet School, and it looks like they're probably doing something with Ness, which is, or.
Project Up.
Or Project Up to do that. And then we're also looking at retaining all of our curricular and extracurricular programs. We are always having to need to upgrade our classroom technology and making sure that we continue on with our one-to-one computer initiative. One of the things that we do provide in this district is that for our students who have been identified through IDEA, they are allowed, they are actually allowed to have continued educational programming, and we provide that onsite, actually in the central office area, and that's for 18 to 22-year-olds. A lot of them are for vocational training, life skills, and some social stuff. We have an enterprise, an enterprise system called the Treehouse, which is providing child before and after school childcare. It also provides summer programming. How am I doing?
And you're doing great.
Okay.
Yeah. And also when we have a week break or we have the TLI days, we provide after-school care for, when school's not in session.
And so we have been able to partner with the Town Council and the RTM and to have school resource officers both located at Fitch High School and Groton Middle School. So when we take a look at our budget, once again, these are probably some graphs for those of you who have seen our presentations before that you might be somewhat familiar with. And so as, and this one just really kind of shows that the revenues from the town for the Board of Ed budget is about 62%. We do have monies that come in for the ECS, which is the Educational Cost Sharing Grant, and we've listed on the bottom of that graph, some of the other places where that is. When you take a look at an educational budget, there are just kind of buckets, if I can call it that, where, where we have to pay or where we have to be paying attention to. And as you can see, our, our best resource are, is our staff, both our, both our teachers, our paraprofessionals, our tutors, those who have direct contact, for, actually everyone, because actually everyone supports our, the students. And so, but that is the largest part of where our budget is, and oftentimes, a lot of that is a contractual obligation. The next slide is just to kind of show people about where we came. So for our friends on the Town Council, the superintendent approached the budget with you guys. We had a conversation about that, and as you can see what her number was, which was the 4.98. We have, we, this slide demonstrates sort of what, where we were able, what we were able to have further conversations, both prior and after our conversation with you, to where we got to the 2.97, which is the budget that the Board of Ed on the 21st or the 22nd approved as theirs. And so some of that talks about where we were able to take a look at some of the more savings that they were doing. And also, I think what's important, I'm gonna pause for just a second, one of the things that's really important is that there was a lot of ARPESR, which the ESR is for the educational, it was for the pandemic or the COVID funds. And any of the staff that we found, we thought that was fundamental, that we needed to keep, we actually put back into our operational budget. Is that not correct for most, for most positions? So that when the sunset of the ARPESR, we would not be taking a look at staff shortages, which was a concern that both our friends at the Town Council had mentioned, and we thought that that was very important as well, and so we have done that. The next slide is the most fun slide. I'm looking at Ken because this was what Ken is. So if you look at, if you remember what the number was at 2.97, one of the ways that we were able to get down to that is to use our health insurance corridor. And so my understanding is that if you took a look at, Ken, you wanna help me out?
Sure. So this slide is, it's a representation of our health insurance reserve, or what we anticipated to be for 2024. And on the bottom of the chart, you'll see the yellow and the red levels, and those, those represent, the red represents the corridor, which is 25% of our annual claims. It's, it's the minimum amount that we are, we need to have in our reserve. And the yellow is the, the health insurance reserve above corridor. That's, that's the one that, that we have some discretion on moving up and down. And that's what we did on that previous slide.
But I would say that it was brought to our attention from a Town Councilor to take a closer look. So Lori La Pine, who does a lot of work around the Health Savings Plan, and Ken really looked at that and realized where we could go with it, so we were able to take more of that in order to reduce the budget, but in a responsible way, because if there was something catastrophic.
I believe, Manager Burt, you also said in your budget is that it's a budget of inflation. And so that, I think that that is something that the Board of Ed would also include states with you, in that a lot of our costs, just inflationary, went up, and that is also kind of demonstrated in some of the columns. Once again, when you take a look at this slide, it really talks about the different areas that we have to pay attention to. It's across the board, across the country. I believe that those salary benefits, it's easy for me to say, purchase services, property services, and transportation supplies, equipment, dues and fees. That is what is, that's what makes up every single educational budget across, I'm not gonna say across the world, but definitely across the United States.
And we also negotiated with a new bus contract. Bus contracts around the state went up millions of dollars, so we were able to do some negotiating so we wouldn't take the hit all at once in the very beginning. So that worked to our favor.
Thank you, Susan. So when we take a look at some of the ways that we have helped support our budget, there are different categories. There's the categorical grants, there's the competitive grants, and there are the grants that I just talked about, which is the coronavirus grants, which is the CARES, CARES Act, the ARPESR that is specific for that. And this slide represents sort of what we got or what we get from each one of those grants. So categorical grants are the ones that kind of come from us through the federal government. We have something that is Carl Perkins, which is, really kind of supports our vocational education piece. We have the school readiness funds that support our early childhood. The federal special education grant, also known as IDEA, that is, that is monies that come into, to help support the, the school budget. The DOD, which is the supplemental impact grant, which we use really primarily for tech support. And then, as, as many of you know, we have been a lion's school district for the past four, five years. Yeah, five years, maybe?
No, six, because they wanted to graduate us at year five.
Okay.
But we wouldn't let them.
So, and I believe that the reason why it's zero is that we don't know how much money that we're going to get, but that usually roughly adds up to about 250,000. Is that correct?
Right.
We have those numbers coming from. I can't even tie my shoes. Look, I don't even have tie shoes on.
So can I just add with the school readiness grant? That's a grant that comes through us as a fiduciary, but it actually supports the childcare and preschools that are in our town. So that provides like many more seats that, you know, beyond what the school is providing. So that's really a great thing. Children First Groton works collaboratively with Groton Public Schools, and they also go for additional grants as well. So I just wanted you to know that that supports our families, our children, before they get to public school.
The next is the competitive grants. In the past several years, the Groton School District has worked really hard to locate different, different funding sources to help support our children so that we could not have the taxpayers have all the burden of pain for every single thing that is, that comes in. And so some of these are, are SEM grants, which I, the reason why it's zero is that because it's in its fifth year. Is that correct?
They're wrapping up.
That we're wrapping up that. And then, so we have, and the DODIA stands for the Department of Defense Education Agency?
Activities.
Activities? I was close. I'm gonna just make up the acronyms. But because we're a military school district, we are able to apply for those, for those grants. And so once again, I think that we try to be very diligent in making sure that we go for the competitive grants, always with an eye for the fact that most of these grants are for five years, and so whatever we get, we need to make sure that at the fifth year, as it sunsets, that it's something that we can support afterwards. Once again, that was my point of any of the, any of the positions that we had for our, that came through our ARPESR, which is the coronavirus grants, is that we made sure that we put them back into our operational budget so that they would, because they're important to us, that we own them now so that they, we can continue to kind of think about them as we think about our budget process. And then the, the grants for the COVID, and that stuff is, is there as well. This is just a history of the Groton Public School grants, of budgets, starting from the school year, fiscal year 2016 to 2017, to what we, what we're in right now. And so when you take the average of those years, our, we have asked, we have gotten an increase of 0.5%. What I like about the next couple of ones that will be shown is, is that we work really hard in the district, when specifically for the Board, is to make sure that our cost per pupil is in a reasonable amount. And when you look at the, even when you look at the 2021, 2022, Groton was 18+, Connecticut Average was 20, and so we had a variance of over $1,000. And the next two slides, the first one is gonna show what it looks like compared to other school districts in our area, and it kind of, if you can see like the, the white line or the sky blue one, that is where Groton is, with Old Saybrook being on one side and the other side of us would be ledgered, with the last two is gonna be the state average and the local average. The next slide also kind of just represents our district, our DURG. I love that word, DURG, which is, really means the District Reference Group. And so it's based on, on, I don't know if it's considered a formula, but it's based on sort of matching socioeconomic.
Like districts.
Like districts, sort of population, I think, as well, but I think it's also, it's mostly based on socioeconomic. And so when you look at Groton at 18, Bloomfield, which is also in our DURG, is at 24, and then Nagatuck is at 16 on the, on the other end. So that is sort of where Groton is when we consider what we pay for pupil.
And this we'll be talking about on Monday.
Yes, so this one is gonna be for conversations when we go through our capital improvement plan this coming, I think it's next Monday, I believe, we're, we're partying again. But I do wanna set the stage, is that I know, and I've had this conversation with Mayor Melendez and also with Manager Burt, is that we put on the athletic fields, we put on the field house, and we put on the bleachers. We, we know that, that you guys have created a fields committee and you're, and we're looking at the package of that, but we didn't want people to lose sight of the importance of how, how, how things are not really well at the, at the field house, our, our football field, and our bleachers. And, but we do know that the cost of repairing them or taking care of that is way beyond a capital improvement. We knew that, but we just wanted to make sure that, that, that just didn't get lost. And the other one that's on there that has also been zeroed out has been our culinary arts program. If you remember, a couple minutes ago, in my very long Discord, and I really am done after this, is that we talked about that we have career pathways. We do have a very exciting culinary arts program. It's not to match the Grasso Tech that has its own very specific culinary arts program, but our culinary arts program is a way for kids to kind of, can I use the word, get a taste of what it would be like to work in this field, to gain some skills, and to gain some interest. We have a culinary arts building, or excuse me, room, that's in what we call our vintage area, and we did pay for a study last year, and they came up with about a $600,000 price tag to, to sort of improve that. It's a very truncated room. We don't have spaces for our students to get there. We have a lot more students who want to take the program than, than Ken, and so I think that the Board of Ed would just really love a way to kind of partner with the town about ways that we could come up with the 600, the 600,000, so that we can really fortify our career pathways program that we have so diligently created. So that is just something that I, I would love for us to kind of have a, have a consideration to. And then I'm just gonna, what we're gonna end with is just, or is that, is there anything more?
Kids.
Kids, yeah. This is sort of where, this is sort of why I'm here, and this is sort of why the Board do, does what we do, and this is why we have staff that are so very dedicated to our, to our kids. I believe all of these are of our new buildings, and we are so incredibly proud to be residents in those, in our new school buildings. But once again, thank you very much. I appreciate it. But that is the end of the Board of Ed presentation.
Thank you. On to the Town Manager's presentation.
Here, you need the clicker now? Your turn.
Oh, you're more talented. You can do the clicker?
I don't think you want me to.
Man, I have to go after the kids' pictures. I know I should've went first.
Is that like a countdown to?
It's probably input, maybe.
You should just start singing.
You don't want that.
Thank you for being here. It's always good to see people participate in local government, so I applaud you. Just a little bit about how the process works timeline-wise for the budget. We actually started on the budget in October among the departments, getting, doing some preliminary work, having meetings, talking about where we're gonna be going the next year. Everything is due to me from the departments by January 14th. We start putting all that stuff together. The Board of Ed and political subdivisions aren't due until the February 28th, however, so our decisions are made before we see the other pieces of the budget. There has to be a, a budget, a public hearing by March 15th, sorry, the budget has to be prepared by March 15th, April 6th, public hearing by then, so we made it by one day tonight. That's what this step is. Council has until April 28th to approve the budgets. We have a lot of meetings over the next three weeks to do that. It kicks off tomorrow night with the Board of Ed, and all of those budget meetings will be at the annex if you're interested in going. You can also sign up via Zoom to, to watch, and it'll be aired live on YouTube. The RTM has to start their budget meetings by May 3rd, and they also have a very tight timeline to wrap it up, May 25th, and then the council gets that final budget back and has to set the fund balance usage and tax rate by June 9th. So pretty tight timeline for that, but for the, for the whole process, it's about an eight-month process, so it's a pretty long process. Town Manager has influence over about a third of the budget, things that I can make changes to, primarily town, town operations, capital projects, that type of thing. No authority over subdivisions, Board of Ed, and some of the larger outside agencies. Debt service, including the Groton 2020, does fall under the town, so it does show up in our budget for the new buildings, which are very well worthwhile. And then kind of the role of the council and RTM, the council is the only body that can increase the total beyond the, what I set the budget at. RTM can go with the highest of the two, so that's the only way to do that. RTM can restore a, of course, they make cuts by simple majority, but they can restore a cut that the council makes by a two-thirds majority vote. Some of the concerns we have just ongoing and in the future budget-wise, state unfunded mandates, town healthcare, retirement costs, utilities, fuel, that's really hurting our public works department this year, electricity. Concerns to make sure at some point Groton Public Schools assumably would come off of being an alliance district, and that would be a hit to the budget that way for revenues. And then we definitely need to, it was mentioned by Kim that, that the poor shape of the field house, that is definitely true. The, all the high school, a lot of the high school facilities are in very poor shape. We need a solid plan to how to fix those as well as expand what we have for athletic facilities. And overall, for this budget, it's primarily a level budget, meaning continuing on with the same level of services. Proposed budget is about 149 million. That's about 6.389, 3.4 million, or 6.4 million increase, or 4.47. Now, I should say, I expect, these things always change during the process. Town Council will make their changes, RTM will make their changes. Town council will make their changes, RTM will make their changes. So that will, of course, change during the process. Proposed mill rate, our current mill rate right now is 21.28. The proposed mill rate, if everything stayed the same, is 22.24, which is a .96 increase, a little less than one mill. And that's using a fund balance of $4.5 million to do that. Where do we kind of fall for mill rates among the region? We actually have the lowest in the immediate region. The next closest, we're at 21.28. Next closest is Stonington at 23.66 and goes up from there. So we're actually the lowest in the region. And then we're in the top, we're in like in the best, lowest 20% or so statewide. So we do pretty well in our mill rate. That .96, if it did go through for a mill rate increase, how does that affect different household size or assessed values? Home assessed at $100,000 would have a tax increase of $96 at that amount. At $200,000 house, $192. $300,000 would be $288 in a year and $400,000 would be $384. Some of the big increases, and I'll go a little bit more detail in this in a minute, but some of the things I've increased this year, town operations by about 2.8 million or 7.2%. Education, 2.35 million, just under 3%. Capital debt service, about 700,000. Outside agencies, about 152,000. Subdivisions, meaning Grotton, Long Point and the city, and I believe Fire Pilots under that too, is 334,000. You can kind of see graphically those increases where it falls. Now, like I said, the town operations is higher than education, but we break it out by department. If you're just looking at departments, it's only about 1.6 million. And the rest is some other things like insurances, but also some transfers to outside funds that we have to fund. Again, 1.49 million. This just goes over our debt service. We have about 11.4 million we pay in debt each year. About 9.1 million is for the Grotton 2020 so we don't have a whole lot of other debt left for the town proper. This is just graph, this just illustrates, I think most people know the bulk of expenses is personnel costs. This just shows that about 80% of the town operations costs is for personnel costs. So it's quite a bit of the cost that you don't have a whole lot of control over. Other things, the rest of the 20% are professional services, utilities, any of those types of things, anything that's not personnel. A little bit more detail on the increases. I should have had a copy in front of me. My eyes are getting bad.
Your slides are not advancing on the, here they are, but not on the production. I don't know why they're not.
It's on theirs from that one.
Can I control it from here?
It's controlled from over there. Yeah, it's on, it's on. Well, are you just looking though?
So I'm getting this from people that are online. They're telling me it's not advancing on the live feed. It's not on my system either. I'm on Zoom.
On the recording, Sean, I assume it'll show up. On the recording, it'll show up. So worse, so worse if people want to watch the recording later. And then going back to the increases. First part, general government, that's things like the town clerk, legal services and then the town council, about 100,000 increase. General services, like my budget, human resources, finance, those are going up about, I think that says about, 150,000-ish. Public safety is about 677,000. That's a large department. That's got a lot of people in it. Public works and police are our largest departments. Public works have an increase of about 400,000, if I remember correctly. And that's mostly utilities, fuel, that type of thing. That's almost exclusively inflationary items outside of some contractual obligations. And then, so all in all, again, for town departments, about $1.6 million increase. Non-departmental insurance is self, both liability, health insurance, property insurance, all of that's about $800,000 insurance. We do shop that out almost every year. Trying to, we constantly looking at better deals. So we try to do as well as we can on that, but that's what's happening nowadays. Town operations totaled about 2.7 million increase. The capital debt service and capital reserve increase of 600,000 to 700,000. Education, where you mentioned, mentioned pretty much everything else. So all in all, a little over 4% general fund increase, about 4.5%. That's just some other outside funds. This presentation will be available online tomorrow so you can look at the whole thing tomorrow, along with looking at all the budget, which is out there now. Capital projects, that's what a lot of people tend to be interested in. What are we doing for capital projects? Now, of course, you know, this could change through the process. Anything that we put, that I put in here, nothing can be added to this list that I don't put in here because it goes through the Planning and Zoning Commission. They have to review it. So anything, nothing new will be added to this list, but some things might be taken off or altered, obviously. Up to two years ago, we used to fund our roads through a bond issue. We, that ran out, we didn't rebond, we want to save the insurance. So now we moved in about a million for roads. That's to keep it at bare minimum, trying to keep up with roads. We could probably put more in towards that. We have a big project for design we want to do for Main Street and No Ink. We have sidewalks, we spend about $75,000 every single year just repairing sidewalks where tree roots up, heave them, that type of thing. We're also trying to plug in gaps where you have sidewalks that aren't quite connected. We try to fill those in, try to make things more walkable. We have an older plant, we're just trying to plug away at that. Street tree inventory, that's actually, we just did our. Golf course improvements, you have to keep up with that every year. We usually spend 100,000 to 200,000 a year on that. Let's see, No Ink Park, if you're familiar with that, looking at a first round project of that, first thing we're actually looking to do there. Some pathways, a fencing, trees, some of those types of things. Some basic things to make that a nice park. For education, now if it's zeroed out but in here, that means you, it's not, I don't have an amount in there, but the town council could, because it's on the list, the town council could choose to fund something. So everything the Board of Ed had mentioned is on the list, just not always, not right now with a number on it. We've got security cameras, 245,000 to enhance or replace, expand security cameras in several schools. Money to hook up the cameras to the dispatch centers so if there was an emergency, first responders could see what's happening. Now, that's not going to be ongoing monitors when there is an emergency. It's not meant to be trying to catch anybody in anything just for an emergency. Some work at the Town Hall complex there, at the community center. And then IT, there's always an amount of IT we have to do every year. Let's see, every few years, we have to do the Plan of Conservation Development, basically the Planning and Zoning Commission's plan. That's about 150,000. We have to do that this year. That's pretty much a required thing we have to do. We have some money in there for downtown mystic parking. I don't know where that's going to go. People have probably been reading about that. And other than that, that's the highlights. We're focusing this year now in terms of what roads we do, that we get them indexed every so often to show what kind of condition they're in. The, we try plugging away at the lower condition ones, but also getting bang for our buck by concentrating the roads we do. So this year, it's focusing more on No Ink, doing a number of roads there, as well as Flanders Road also. In terms of the different increases in amounts, what would that translate to mill rate increases if you took everything else out of the picture? Departments, that 1.6 million, that'd actually be about, and just, you know, one mill, one mill is about 4.6 million. So the department increase of 1.6 million would be about .35 mill increase if it was just a straight increase without any offset from revenue. Capital debt service is about 1.148, education about .5, outside agencies .03, subdivisions .07. You can kind of see about 1.4 would have been just based on that. Revenues, property taxes by far are the biggest revenues. 70% of our revenue is property taxes, about 104,000. Some of the amounts we get, so 104,000 for general, for property taxes, license and permits, between 500 and 600,000. Our investments have gone up, which is nice. That's the one positive thing. We usually budget about 100,000, now it's up to about 400,000. State grants for education, that's about 26 million. So great help there. State grants and aid for general government, about 6 million, 6.4. Federal grants in aid, we get about 4 million, 4.3 million. So, but again, primarily through general funds, or through general property taxes. This is just kind of a wrap-up, final quick facts, just kind of takeaways. Total revenue, about 149 million, same for expenses. Largest source of revenue is local taxes, 104 million. The net grant list as of October 1st, '22 is about 4.7 billion with a B. It went up by about 1.2, a little over 1% for this year. We're hoping with the large billion EB and some other things going on, that we'll see a bigger increase in the near future, which would definitely help with the revenue. And then largest expenditure is education, 81 million. Town operations with everything is 42 million. Unassigned fund management, right now we have 31.9 million. We have some planned usage for this year and then also for next, if we use that for next year. We'll be at about the 19% to 20% funded amount, which is right about where we want to be. So mill rate, 22.24. And then pension, we're about 80% funded, which is pretty good. I anticipate we'll go down a little bit this year with what's happening in the last year with the markets. And OPEP, which is Other Post-Apartment Benefits, that's health insurance for retirees, about, we're about 50% funded, which is actually considered very good for towns. We're pretty well funded getting along there on that. So other than that, that's what I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. So now we will open the public hearing. Just a note, to register to speak during this portion of the meeting virtually or to submit letters of support, please email council@grotton-CT.gov. First on my list, I have Catherine Brighty, followed by Eugenia Valagra.
My name is Catherine Brighty and I live at 68 Brooks Haven Road. I'm the Chair of the Grotton Public Library Board and I'm here to speak on behalf of the library. You've received written comments from other board members and many dedicated library patrons and I'm sure that's reinforced your sense of how highly the library is regarded in town. I enjoy volunteering there, particularly because I hear such gratitude and enthusiasm from the library users. They tell me how they've been coming to the library since they were children, what a wonderful place it is and how helpful they find the staff. Every time, I'm cheered and inspired by the difference this library is making to our residents. In these difficult economic times, even more people are turning to the Grotton Public Library. Obviously, borrowing from the library's rich collection of books and DVDs saves money on bookstores and streaming services. The ability to print and copy documents on-site makes purchase of a printer unnecessary. And with pandemic restraints largely lifted, free lectures and programs are again providing in-person education and entertainment. This year, a grant allowed the Grotton Public Library to open a toy library. Cardholders can borrow board games, toys and video games for a range of free family activities at home. Career help remains popular with many one-on-one appointments booked every week for assistance with writing resumes and coaching around job searches. The library's excellent Wi-Fi service is finding increasing traffic too, on top of the computers that have always been available for public use. Recently, my niece was working for our home during a visit and we discovered that our internet speed was woefully insufficient for her. I brought her to the Grotton Public Library where she was instantly thrilled by the Wi-Fi capabilities. In the course of her hours there, she noted with pleasure the encouragement and patience displayed by the library's staff as they assisted patrons with problems and helped them navigate various computer issues. I hadn't really intended to provide surveillance that afternoon, but I was delighted by her observations. She uses three different public libraries in New York City and consistently notes that our municipal library ranks above them in multiple ways. I use library visits as a reward for my free time. The friendly librarians, attractive displays of new books and meetings of energetic and enthusiastic volunteers always lift my spirits. I'm still struck by the miracle of being able to just march into a building and take home whatever materials appeal to me. Libraries crystallize what's best about us. Generosity, trust, a love of learning, shared enjoyment and a sense of community. After decades of living in Grotton, I remain deeply grateful for the support the libraries receive in this wonderful town. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Eugenia Valagra, followed by Larry Dunn.
Good evening, town councilors, town staff and education department representatives. My name is Eugenia Valagra and I'm co-chair of Grotton Conservation Advocates. In recent years, the Parks and Recreation Department has had to take on the maintenance of several additional parks while its staff was regularly cut. Those parks include the Sasquatch Nature Preserve, Cop Family Park, Sparkle Lake Conservation Area and Millwood Creek Disc Golf Course. Finally, in the fiscal year 23 budget, the town allocated one additional full-time employee position shared between parks and the golf course to fill this serious deficit, but it does not bring the Parks Department up to the 2009 level of 7.7 time full-time employees. Now the town is embarking on an ambitious plan to build up to five new ball fields in town, probably three at the Claude Chester School site. As this project moves forward, it is critical that the town fund the staff needed to maintain these fields, which we fervently hope will be natural grass and not synthetic or plastic turf. In addition, Grotton's parks are one of its greatest assets and the existing staff of one full-time employee to manage all the parks is woefully inadequate. We request that the 2024 Parks Maintenance Budget be increased to allow an additional full-time employee to meet these extra demands on staff and keep our parks healthy for both people and the natural world we all enjoy. Second, we strongly encourage the town of Grotton to reinvest in the Open Space Fund for future land acquisitions. This should be a top priority. The council put zero into the fund in fiscal year 2023, leaving it with almost no funds. We suggest that the town commit to investing a minimum of 25,000 in fiscal year 2024, and I think I just saw that in the budget. Is that right? Yes. And make a good effort to increase it to 40,000. At this rate, it will take at least eight years before the town has set aside enough money to support the purchase of an important piece of land in Grotton. Third, we strongly support town plans to fund a tree inventory. Without the capacity to inventory our trees, we have no idea if Grotton is suffering a net loss of trees, which it probably is, and at what rate. Trees are vitally important for reducing heat islands in a warming world and for carbon uptake in the fight against climate change. Grotton should have a plan to not only increase our tree coverage, but to do so with native, climate-appropriate species. Thank you very much to all of you for considering these suggestions.
Thank you. Larry Dunn, followed by Robert Zuliani.
Good evening. I'm Larry Dunn, 91 Crosswinds Drive. I'm here as the Chair of the Conservation Commission. And the prior speaker said a lot of the things that I was going to say. So I'm going to just kind of add it a little bit and reinforce some of what she said. In the past, the Conservation Commission has provided hard data that demonstrates that open space is an economic value to the town, not a drag on the town. It encourages people to move here and take advantage of that. Secondly, it also provides, you know, a lot of health benefits and I'll talk of that in a little bit. Pursuant to that, we have a couple of points. One is, I also support the POCD investment. That's a multi-year effort and it takes a lot of energy. And unlike prior years from the Conservation Commission, we're committed to working with the staff and the other commissions to have a locally-produced and supported plan of conservation. Second, on the capital improvement plan that was mentioned is that this has been unfunded for a number of years. This is a long-range investment. This isn't something that still buys something for 25,000. It's a way of slowly incrementing that investment fund as well as the 10% that comes with, potentially comes with any new development as an offset. Thirdly, I also support the street tree inventory. I won't repeat what she just said in the interest of time. I do want to spend a little more time on the Parks and Rec, item 1064 in the budget. Underfunding parks maintenance isn't Underfunding parks' maintenance isn't just a local issue. At the state level, the governor has pledged 55 million to address basic needs for state-owned parks. I know if you've spent any time at Long Point, I went, last weekend, there wasn't any parking. I mean, it was filled to capacity. Likewise, and I'll compare this, pre and post-COVID. So pre-COVID, it was light use. During the COVID period, it was significant, not only at the state level, but at the local level, there's a significant increase in usage of our local parks. Subsequent, I've seen a decrease, but not a lot. So people kind of got out there, they liked what they were doing, and they, they're keeping doing it. So what we're doing is, we have the space, we have more people using it, more people using it then says, you know, does require a bit more maintenance. So similar to the state pledge, is we're recommending that the parks' maintenance budget be increased to a minimum of 800,000, from what it's in there is about 550, 759. And I should point out that 60% protected and 6% preserved, 66% of the town-owned property is open space. And it does deserve the attention that, that, that warrants. And that concludes what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Zuliani.
Good evening, my name is Robert Zuliani, I live at 23 Cushman Street. I have to confess, I can't compete with your first speaker supporting the Grotton Town Library. I come to you as a taxpayer and citizen of the Grotton, of the town of Grotton. I come before you this evening to support all three libraries that we have here in Grotton. I'm one of the, I'm one of those individuals who has utilized all three libraries and, and understand what they do for the Grotton community. Each are individual treasures in themselves. All three libraries represent the intellectual fundamentals of the community. Grotton is very lucky to have three separate libraries located in key areas of, in the community. They support programs and availability of vast resources for young and old. From reading books, resourcing, resourcing topics, studying areas of interest, seeking jobs, opportunities, personal entertainment, and many, many more resources for the community. I ask that you give our three libraries the financial support needed to keep in Grotton strong. I thank you for your consideration. I also want to compliment and support the Board of Ed budget, I thought that was a well-presented package. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we have someone via Zoom? Mrs. Gothier, you have the floor.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, thank you. So, my name is Lauren Gothier, 31 Boardsden Road. I am requesting that the town council remove and reassign responsibility for account number 109000, the City of Grotton Police Budget. I want to make it very clear that this is not an anti-police stance. I fully support the City of Grotton Police, and I'm very appreciative of their work with the community. This is more of a pro-fiscal responsibility stance. This is about a principled approach to municipal budgeting. There's no statutory requirement for the town to pay for the city police budget or any other municipal department of the city. The town of Grotton does not pay for the other municipal departments of the city, nor do we pay for the police departments of other municipalities. Again, there is no statutory responsibility for this budget item. Like every other municipal department created and administered by the city, it only makes sense to allow them to retain responsibility and control over their own police budget. The city recently boasted a flat mill rate for this fiscal year in quote "healthy reserve." Between their ability to raise a mil, apply fund balance, and other means, the city has the tools and resources to support their police department the same way they support their Parks and Rec Department, their planning department, the Economic Development Department, Building and Public Works. This line item represents about $3 million, overall 2% of the town of Grotton fiscal 24 budget, fiscal year 24 budget. Of the $6.3 million increase in this budget, reducing this item alone would reduce that increase by about 46%. I'd like to point out that since the Democrats took the majority on this council in 2017 and first presented a budget in 2018, those seven budgets, of seven subsequent budgets from 2018 to 2024, have amounted in about a $10.5 million increase to the town residents. In the town manager's address, the town manager emphasizes that prior to cutting town departments, this council should seek cuts to non-town functions. This budget item is not a town function, it is a city function, and the responsibility for this budget should stay with the city. The town manager also stressed a need to support town infrastructure, insulate against decreases in state grants, embrace the town for increases in healthcare and retirement costs. This $3 million, if reallocated, would go a long way in helping those efforts. It would also go a long way in reducing financial burden on town residents if completely removed. Town residents have been squeezed by recent historic economic crises from the pandemic, spikes in inflation, and economists are forecasting on their horizon potentially a recession. To be fiscally responsible and to be forward-focused, I believe the town needs to critically and unpolitically consider the costs in this budget, the principles of taxing residents for every budget account, and the impact on residents to take on expenses unduly. At the very least, there needs to be a very serious conversation about why this item is in the town budget and not the city budget, and if that is still prudent. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at this time? If so, you can approach the podium, please give your name and address for the record. Is there anyone else online? Okay. Seeing no other interested speakers, we'll close the public hearing at 7:04.